Did we get quorum?
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon, I have 4:01 or 4:02 PM actually. And just go ahead and reconvene into the open session of the board meeting. First, let's do the pledge of allegiance with two Vice Young, one to lead us in the pledge.
Apologies, may I call the roll?
Let me do that first, yes, let's call a roll to establish quorum.
Supervisor Abicoga.
Aye.
Supervisor Jung.
Here.
Here.
Supervisor Ellenberg.
I'm here.
Vice President Arenas is absent. President Lee.
President as well, good afternoon.
You have a quorum with four, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Jung, please.
Please stand if you're able.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so first item would be consideration of recommendations relating, which is item seven, recommendations relating to the certificates of appreciation, commendations and proclamations. First item, we have adopting proclamation declaring May 2025 as Asian-American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander.
President Lee.
Yes.
I believe you, you'll need to vote on the items before.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, let's go ahead and do that first. I'm not going to read every one of them, but yes, A through K.
I'm happy to move approval of all items.
Motion moved.
I actually need to remove item 7G from today's agenda.
Okay, right. Okay, the moving is for items A through K except item G, is that correct to make your motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Seconded, moved to seconded. Do we need any public comments? Nope, alright, let's vote.
The comment necessary.
Supervisor Abicoga.
Aye.
Supervisor Jung.
Yes.
Supervisor Ellenberg.
Yes.
President Lee.
Supervisor.
Vice President Arenas momentarily abstaining, thank you, President Lee.
Aye as well.
Carries with four.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so now we can go ahead and go through the actual presentation, proclamation, recommendations. First one is declaring May 2025 as the Asian-American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Santa Clara County. Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite the following people to the dais. Leah Balabat in Deere on New Pindi, Misuk O, Brian Tamangvong, and Cindy Kun. Please come up. Hello there. Thank you for being here. Hello, hello, hi there. Actually, why don't you come up this way, so we could all face the... So first of all, look at the beautiful dresses and outfits they have all today. Thank you. So the county of Santa Clara proudly proclaims May 2025 as Asian-American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander AANHPI Heritage Month. This month is a time to honor the rich history, achievements, and contributions of AANHPI communities locally and nationwide. Over 24 million AANHPI individuals live in the United States, representing one of the fastest-growing and most diverse populations that continues to shape our country's culture, economy, and identity. In Santa Clara County, this community make up of over 38.9% of the population, reflecting a vibrant and integral part of our region. We celebrate and reflect how the AANHPI experience has been essential to American history, from early immigration to modern-day innovations. These contributions include being the first Filipino landing back in 1587, the Chinese laborers building the transcontinental railroad when they first was told to dig gold, the military service and sacrifice in the defense of our nation many, many times, and over 60 Nobel Prize winners in science, technology, and the arts. So this year, the AANHPI Heritage Month celebration hosted by the Asian-Pacific Islander Employee Committee, APIEC of the county's social services agency, will take place on Wednesday, May 14, 2025, with the theme "Legacies of Leadership and Resilience." And we recognize the AANHPI excellence across fields, business, technology, medicine, academia, agriculture, the arts, and public service. So finally, we celebrate the resilience, leadership, and service of this community in helping build, protect, and represent our nation. Now, on behalf of the board, I want to present a proclamation to the Asian-Pacific Islander Employee Committee and invite this group to also say a few words. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Today, we gather in recognition of a proclamation that holds profound significance, not just for those of Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Island heritage, but for all who value diversity, inclusion, and the collective strength of our communities. On behalf of the API Employment Committee, I extend my deepest gratitude to the Board of Supervisors and Supervisor Lee. This acknowledgement is more than a ceremonial gesture, it is reaffirmation of our shared history, contribution, and resilience. On May 14, we are celebrating May Heritage Month, the topic being legacies of leadership and resilience. The voice of our ancestors have echoed through generations. Their sacrifices, perseverance, and triumphs laid the foundation upon which we stand today. As we celebrate our heritage, we recognize work that still lies ahead, the continued fight for equity, representation, and justice. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Sure, yes, please, go ahead, yeah. Any of the members who would like to come and join us, please? Coming up, don't be shy.
I'm gonna scoot behind you.
Scoot behind, this is exactly, the tall ones, please come behind you. Don't get squeezed in the middle. Thank you as always.
Thanks so much.
Alright, the second item today is the proclamation declaring May 2025 as the Internal Audit Awareness Month in Santa Clara County. In honoring the professional internal auditors for their contribution, I'd like to welcome Albert Beltran Jr. and his colleagues up to dais for their contributions. We recognize, coming up, Albert. So we at the county of Santa Clara are proud to acknowledge May 2025 as the Internal Audit Awareness Month. Internal auditors are a central addition to organizations, monitoring the risks and ensuring adequate channels and controls are in place to mitigate our risks. Alongside board members, executive management, and external auditors, internal auditors are cornerstone of our governance and who helps to ensure that organizations can and do comply with new legislation regulations. The Institute of Internal Auditors, IIA, was first established back in 1941 as a professional association for all those essential employees. Today, it has more than 200 members around the globe working in internal auditing, risk management, internal control, and more. The IIA is represented in almost 200 countries and territories, with the state of California alone having 11 IIA chapters. Here in San Jose, the IIA chapter represents more than 711 members, some of whom are city, county, and state employees. We thank you, all of you, for your dedication and service to our community. Will allow Albert Beltran also to say a few words and call the rest of the board afterwards. Go ahead, Albert.
Ladies and gentlemen of the county Board of Supervisors, my name is Ray Chong, and I'm a board member of the San Jose chapter of the Institute of Internal Auditors. And I'm honored to represent over 700 internal audit professionals across Silicon Valley. Thank you Supervisor Arthur Lee and the entire board for this proclamation. It means a great deal to our members. Many of our work, know work quietly behind the scenes to ensure that public and private organizations run with transparency, accountability, and integrity. Whether it's making sure taxpayers' funds are used wisely or helping companies stay compliant and ethical, internal auditors play a key role in protecting what matters, from public trust to long-term resilience. Here in California, our fellow auditors and I regularly adhere to strict standards to meet applicable federal, state, and corporate regulations. Our work ensures that Silicon Valley businesses and local governments operate with integrity and transparency. These principles are essential for the health of the economy and communities. We may not seek the spotlight, but recognition like this now shines a light on the real impact of our work, helping organizations serve people better, ensuring smooth operations, and limiting surprises. So on behalf of our chapter, thank you again for your support and for valuing the work we do for the community.
Alright, so moving on to the next commendations is item three regarding the Affordable Housing Month, I believe Supervisor Renas, this one is yours.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone, I'm Sylvia Arenas, I represent District One. It extends from South San Jose all the way down to Gilroy. And I'd like to call up our Office of Supportive Housing and Partners over at SV at Home to come up here with me. Where are the housers at? Come on up. It really is my honor to proclaim May as Affordable Housing Month, a time to come together to reaffirm our shared commitment to affordable housing and advancing housing justice really for all. Through, throughout May and beyond, we are going to work to shine a light on the urgent need for safe, stable, and affordable housing for all, including our unhoused community, of course, our children's families, and our hard-working agricultural workers. This year's theme is hashtag "Strength in Housing." And when I look at the leaders standing with me today, I see the strength, resilience, and unwavering commitment to ensure that our most vulnerable communities are protected and housed. And it's important that we all work collectively to implement solutions that work best for our communities and actually prevent homelessness in the first place. And it's important that we uplift the voices of those with lived experiences to shape policies. And lastly, it is equally as important that we hold ourselves accountable to building a future where everyone has a place to call home. A group that has been historically overlooked when it comes to housing has been our agricultural workers. Some people don't even know that we still have agricultural land in this county, but it's there in the south part of our county. And this is why I'm really proud to introduce a comprehensive agricultural work, housing work plan to ensure that men and women, as well as their children, who put food on our plates have access to the safe, secure, and affordable housing that they deserve. And thanks to the leadership of our board and our county administration, including our Office of Supportive Housing, we're making real progress in increasing housing opportunities for agriculture workers. As well as together with SV at Home, we've worked to bring farmworker housing needs to the forefront of affordable housing conversation. So I'm just going to do a bit of thanking. I love to express my gratitude to folks, and so bear with me. There's a lot of people who are working for us and with us to make sure that we address housing needs. And I'm going to begin with Consuelo Hernandez, with KJ Kaminsky, with Hillary Armstrong, with Natalie Monk, with Jessica Orozco, as well as all of the Housing Community Development Team and the entire homelessness prevention team, as well as Regina Celestine Williams, Allison Singalini, and the entire SV at Home home crew. Thank you for being part of this collective effort and for standing with us in advancing housing justice. And then I'd like to just invite everyone Wednesday from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Choa Migrant Center called Farmworker Housing Rights Resource and Advocacy for Farmworkers. We are, we're doing an event there. And lastly, I'd just like to ask KJ to come in and say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, and thank you to members of the board for your bold leadership in creating affordable housing. You know, I have the unique position of working at the Office of Supportive Housing, which is special in that it's a county department that both provides homelessness and housing programs, but we also develop affordable housing. housing. Counterparts in other, in other counties don't have that, and that's because Santa Clara County took bold action to pass the 2016 Measure A Affordable Housing Bond, recognizing the link between the shortage of available affordable housing and our homelessness crisis. We know the shortage of affordable housing is a key driver of our homelessness crisis, and developing affordable housing is homelessness prevention. I'm grateful to the board and this county for taking steps to address the root causes of homelessness by supporting development of affordable housing for those that need it the most. And while I get to stand up here, the work is really being accomplished by our teams behind the scenes, so thank you to the OSH staff. And I also really want to recognize that we don't do this work alone. That's why we partner with cities and other agencies across the county through our collective impact model. And today, I want to especially thank the Santa Clara County Housing Authority, the City of Morgan Hill, and the City of Gilroy for our collective efforts to address the shortage of affordable housing for agricultural workers living and working and contributing to our community. We look forward to celebrating the achievements during, that we've made during Affordable Housing Month with, with SV at Home and continuing our commitment to expand affordable housing. We know we have more to do and will be most effective if we're working together towards the same goals.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Regina Celestine Williams, and I am the Executive Director at SV at Home. I just want to express my gratitude to the Board of Supervisors, President Lee, and Vice President Arenas for this proclamation of May as Affordable Housing Month. And this shows that the board believes, as I do, that there is strength in housing, which is our theme for this year's Affordable Housing Month. Nearly half, 44.7% of Santa Clara County residents rent their homes. These are our teachers, our healthcare workers, childcare providers, and neighbors, working families who form the backbone of our communities. But for too many of them, affordable rental housing remains out of reach. Over 60% of our renter households in this county are cost-burdened. That means they spend way too much of their income on rent just to keep a roof over their heads. That leaves little for food, healthcare, transportation, or education. This is not sustainable. It's not acceptable. This housing affordability crisis didn't happen overnight, and it won't be solved overnight. But we know that the path, what the path forward looks like. The state has set important goals through the regional housing needs allocation process, and across Santa Clara County, we must build nearly 73,000 affordable homes by 2031. And we see the consequences of not doing so all around us, as the number of people experiencing homelessness continues to rise, even as we continue to invest resources, political will, time, and capacity towards building more affordable housing. This is due to the fact that the rate at which people are losing their homes is outpacing the rate at which we can produce the housing. Yet, even in the face of these challenges, Santa Clara County has led with innovation and resolve. Measure A is a model for what's possible when voters, government, and community come together. With over 717 million invested, we've created more than 5,000 new homes and renovated hundreds more across 11 cities. This shows that bold countywide action works. Our homeless prevention system is another standout. Since 2017, it has helped over 17,000 residents avoid homelessness. With just 6,000 per household, the program has led an incredible impact. A study found that participants were 81% less likely to become homeless within six months. So, every dollar invested yields over $2 in public benefit, proving that prevention is not only compassionate but cost-effective. But we're not done yet. More than 10,000 affordable homes are currently ready to be built in the pipeline. So, we must work with local and state partners to get these homes built and preserved, and we must do more. We must produce deeply affordable housing, preserve the affordable units we have, protect renters and vulnerable homeowners, and prevent homelessness before it begins. That's the kind of sustained, multifaceted approach this moment demands. So, this year's Affordable Housing Month theme is "Strength in Housing" because housing is more than shelter. It is the foundation of strong, healthy communities. It's how we ensure that every child, every elder, every neighbor has a place to belong. Affordable, Affordable Housing Month isn't just a celebration, it's a movement because together with SV at Home, our partners, with residents, we are building that future. So, I invite you to visit siliconvalleyathome.org/events to explore the inspiring lineup happening across our county this month. And I invite you to continue imagining with us a Santa Clara County where everyone has a safe, stable, affordable place to call home. Thank you and join the movement.
And I'd like to provide this proclamation declaring the May Affordable Housing Month and ask my colleagues to join me for a picture. Thank you, everyone.
So, next we have the proclamation declaring May 2025 as the Resource Parent Appreciation Month in Santa Clara County, also by Vice President Arenas.
You get to see me again. All right, so guess what May is also. It's a Resource Parent Appreciation Month. And I'm going to ask if the folks who are here representing some of the resource parents, Julianne Fisk, Valerie, Kevin Williams, and of course Wendy Canaire is coming to the stage. May is really busy with lots of really great things. And this time, we're, we're going to honor the heart and dedication of the current and past resource families who open their homes and their hearts to foster children. I'd like, and then, of course, they, they also do a lot more than just open their hearts and homes. They help us raise a lot of our children in our community. Here in the County of Santa Clara, we are very proud of the outstanding care and support that our foster parents provide to children and their families, assisting in their healing process and growth. Being a foster parent is more than just providing safe shelter to a child in need. It is the integration of children into their own family, into holiday celebrations, into camping trips, and concerts, and picnics. Every bedtime story, school drop-off, and nutritious meal they provide is a powerful act of care and kindness. Their dedication is a gift to us all, and it's beautiful, it's just beautiful to witness when everyday people realize just how much they have to offer and end up changing young lives forever by becoming resource parents. So, thank you to all of you. Truly, every resource parent that I've ever met is selfless beyond compare. Many have shared with me that they chose to become resource parents because they felt the need to give back. To our current, past, and future resource parents, you're, you're not helping in a small way, you're helping in an enormous gigantic way, whether that was for a short time or by becoming a permanent home for a foster child. Our county recognizes the emotional complexity and challenges that come with fostering, and we thank you. We thank you for staying strong through the highs and through the lows. We are committed to being partners to you, and even better partners to you and to our children in foster care. It takes courage to care deeply, and you embody that courage every day. Thank you for all you do. And I'd love to also invite Supervisor Young to come down. I apologize, I didn't say that from the beginning. Supervisor Young is one of our supervisors that represents the east side of our, of our, of San Jose and beyond, and, and also a true advocate and champion for our foster care parents. I am going to also provide a proclamation and thank our CAFPA folks who are behind me to, for all the support and the resource parents that they, that they themselves help. And I'll mention some of those folks. But first, I'd love to just ask Supervisor Young to, to also share some comments.
Oh, thank you.
Of course.
At this time, I'd like to invite Denise Marshu from CAFPA to join us. Yes, and your colleagues?
Thank you.
It takes a village to care for our children.
And our parents.
I have the great privilege of serving with Supervisor Arenas and the Children, Seniors, and Families Committee, the committee at the county that is dedicated to the well-being and policy and fiscal implications and outcomes for children and our systems of care, and also for the families that make it possible for us to be able to do this work. Thank you for allowing me to be part of this appreciation and commemoration today. And the thing is that anybody could be a resource family. I mean, I shouldn't say anybody. You got to follow some strict qualifications. There are strict qualifications to ensure the highest level of care and duty. But the thing is that you don't have to be wealthy, you don't have to be a rocket scientist, you don't have to be anything other than responsible, loving, caring, generous families and households, which I know that Santa Clara County is in no shortage of. So, I highly encourage anyone here and anyone watching virtually right now to consider signing up to be a resource family or even a child advocate to be able to help us move this huge mission forward. And I'll turn the mic over. I think...
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon.
It is built in there.
Oh, it is built in. Gosh, much more high-tech than I am. Good afternoon. My name is Denise Marshu, and I am the Executive Director for CAFPA, which is the Kinship, Adoptive, and Foster Parent Association here in Santa Clara County. First, I want to thank the board. Thank you so much for recognizing our families, our caregivers. They do a tremendous amount of work all year and get little recognition, which is okay with them. This is kind of the silent hero type job that we have. We just do it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This is really an honor for me. I've been doing this for a long time, and every year I'm still so honored and humbled to be able to represent the many foster parents and caregivers in our community. Families like Nalberta, who has passed away, who cared for over 400 children in her journey in foster care. And on her 400th and 7th child, she called and was crying because this little girl was leaving her after being with her for six months. And I thought, oh, my God, how can you do that after so many children and still love them and care about them and cry when they leave? But I'll tell you, every child deserves to have their parent or foster parent or caregiver cry when they leave. That's something that we owe those children. And then there's Jenny and Mary, who take, have taken in hundreds of tiny medically fragile children, brought them through surgeries, through kidney transplants, through all different types of medical, and they do this over and over again every day of their life. And Gary, who takes in our most challenging teens because he thinks that every child, no matter how old, deserves a second chance. And then the children. We have little Jeffrey, who came into care, and he was in a home for about a year, still visiting with his birth family, which is wonderful, and then transitioning to an adoptive family. He gets in the car, and as he drives away from his foster family, he says, "I am a lucky boy. I have my mommy, Mary. I have my mommy, Ann, and now I have my mommy, Juanita." And I said, "Yes, you are a very special boy and very lucky boy." And then there's little Aaron, who passed away at almost two years after being, he was a cardiac baby and was in the hospital, up at Children's Hospital at Stanford for about six months, and passed away in my arms at 18 months old, almost two. But those are the children that we love and that we're here for and that we don't turn down and that we make sure that they have a loving place to stay. And we have grandparents. Betty was so kind and saying how anybody could be a foster parent. Well, yes, there are a few exceptions, like she said. But we have grandparents and great-grandparents, and aunts and uncles, and teachers, and librarians, and just about every walk of life who step up and say, "I can take in that child." And whether they have one child in their home or they've taken in 100 children, they have made a difference and have truly changed history for those children. So, thank you again for this very wonderful recognition. Thank you for allowing me to be a voice today for our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise, and thank you Supervisor Arenas and Supervisor Young. My name is Wendy Canaire Roush. I'm the interim director for Department of Family and Children Services, and I want to take this moment to both acknowledge we are here to support our Resource Parent Appreciation Month, but it's also Foster Care Awareness Month. And I hope you are hearing today the complexities and what it takes to make sure we're serving some of our most vulnerable in community. We stand here in appreciation for the incredible partners and those who are stepping up to do this work for some of our most vulnerable in community. We recognize that Foster Care Month is a time to recognize the challenges for families working hard in reunification, the children in need of healing and supports, and those who are supporting families. We recognize and honor our key partnership with those caregivers who have come forward, whether they are resource parents that have been recruited and have stepped up, because possibly anyone could step up. But we also recognize that many of these are family members or nonextended family members that have stepped up in order to support some of our most vulnerable. We honor that at only a moment's notice, each of these caregivers support each child, as you're hearing, with love, with care, with meeting their needs, but oftentimes supporting a bridge and supporting biological families at their most vulnerable to ensure that they're successful in reunification. We then ask resource parents to risk their hearts and be the backup plan because if parents are not successful in reunification, we ask these caregivers to be the permanent plan for a child, to be adoptive parents, to be guardianship, to step up and be there as that just-in-case. And if they're not the permanent home, they're also oftentimes a bridge for those biological families, offering respite, offering mentorship, being part of the village that we need in our communities to make sure children are safe and supported and have what they need. We recognize that foster parents are appreciated and needed as DFCS continues to serve families. They're one of the most important partners, and they oftentimes share their homes, their hearts, and make sure that the most vulnerable are served. DFCS recognizes all of the incredible caregivers today, opening their homes, opening their hearts. We lift up the space to ask for others that want to come forward. There is a call to action for those that want to be caregivers. And in the spirit of Foster Care Awareness Month, we ask you to be part of the collective goal of safety, healing, and permanency to be the community we need and the village we need for children. Thank you for this honor.
Supervisor, would you do the honors and please hand that proclamation? Wonderful. Let's give them a big round of applause, everyone. Let's give them a big round of applause, everyone.
And next, we are proclaiming May 25 as Older Americans Month. Supervisor Ellenberg, go ahead.
I don't know if there's any limit to the number of declarations we can announce in one month, but it is now my honor to stand before you today to recognize and celebrate May as Older Americans Month. Every May, communities across the country pause to honor the invaluable contributions of older adults, and here in Santa Clara County, we have much to be proud of. We are a region rich in wisdom, lived experience, and intergenerational connection. In 2018, we became the first county in the nation, along with all 15 of our cities, to be recognized as age-friendly by the World Health Organization. We also acknowledge the longstanding impact of the Older Americans Act, which since 1965 has helped provide vital services to millions of older adults across the nation. Even as the federal landscape evolves, our county's dedication to uplifting and supporting older adults remains steadfast. This month, of course, is about more than recognition, it is also about inclusion. It's about reminding ourselves that everyone deserves the opportunity to stay connected, involved, and valued, no matter their age or ability. So today, we reaffirm our promise to continue building a more inclusive, connected, and compassionate Santa Clara County where aging is celebrated, not sidelined, and where every generation thrives together. I'd like to recognize members of the Senior Care Commission and the Sourcewise Advisory Council in attendance here today. Could you give a little wave so I can see where you are? Hello. Thank you. Your dedication plays a vital role in shaping a community where older adults are supported, respected, and empowered every day. I'd now like to invite Vanessa Merlano, Acting Director of the Department of Aging and Adult Services, and her team to come up and share a few words and accept a commendation. There you are. It's very bright, it's hard to see who's out there.
Good afternoon, and thank you Chair Ellenberg and members of the board and community partners. When Older Americans Month was first established in 1963, just 17 million Americans had reached age 65. A third lived in poverty, and few formal programs existed to support them. That changed thanks to advocates who demanded more, and thanks to a growing national recognition that our elders deserve dignity, respect, and care. What began as Senior Citizens Month was transformed in 1980 by President Carter into what we now call Older Americans Month, a time not just to honor contributions of the past, but to reflect on how we protect and empower older adults today. This year's theme, Flip the Script on Aging, urges us to challenge outdated stereotypes and uplift the truth. Older adults are vibrant, diverse, and essential to our communities. They're caregivers, they're volunteers, they're mentors, they're workers, they're advocates, potentially us. They are living longer, healthier lives, and they're redefining what it means to age. Here in Santa Clara County, the pace of change is undeniable. Nearly 400,000 residents are over 60, 1 in 5. And by 2030, just in five years, it will be 1 in 4. Half of these older adults speak a language other than English at home, and the majority are people of color. Meeting their needs requires us to evolve, invest, and innovate at a time when federal programs like Medicare, Medicaid, and Older Americans Act face threats, and when the Administration for Community Living has been dissolved, we must double down on our local commitment. And thanks to the leadership of this board and this administration, we are. Whether it's through the expansion of caregiver stakeholder groups, age-friendly initiatives, or culturally responsive services, Santa Clara County is showing what it means to lead with purpose. To Supervisor Ellenberg, thank you for championing this proclamation and for your unwavering advocacy. There are incredibly talented folks behind me, and I just want to acknowledge them and thank them, especially want to acknowledge our Senior Care Commission representative today. And to each of you, thank you for continuing to stand with us in advancing equity and care for older residents. Let's not only celebrate our elders this month, let's protect them, empower them, and ensure they thrive. Thank you so much for your time.
Next up, we're doing proclamation declaring May 1 as International Workers' Day in Santa Clara County with Supervisor Young.
At this time, I'd like to invite the members of the May Day Coalition up here to join me, Working Partnerships USA, the South Bay Labor Council, and anyone who marched last Thursday in the May Day March, please join us. Don't be shy. I am honored to present the proclamation today in honor of International Workers' Day, also known as May Day. Last Thursday on May Day, our San Jose County marched with purpose from King and Story to San Jose City Hall, carrying on the powerful tradition of May Day. Across Santa Clara County and the country, we stay united for workers, for immigrants, for social justice. I am proud to stand with our working families and the communities who continue to fight for dignity and equity every single day. In these turbulent times, the attacks on our housing, healthcare, and immigrant neighbors are real, and they're happening right here at home. Local governments, like the county, are often the last line of defense, but it's the community organizations on the ground, like Amigos de Guadalupe, the Unhoused Response Group, Working Partnerships USA, South Bay Labor Council, and so many more who organize, build, and give voice to the voiceless. Together, we are shaping a future where all workers are respected and all communities are protected. I am honored to introduce members of the May Day Coalition, including Ms. Rain Mendoza of Amigos de Guadalupe, and Sean Cartwright of the Unhoused Response Group, to share a few words.
We did a switch-up. The San Jose May Day Coalition unites each year to organize the annual May Day March and Rally on May 1, which is a celebration of International Workers' Day and an affirmation of workers' rights, but also a statement on issues we, as a coalition, stand in support of or will stand up and fight against.
La coalición del primero de mayo de San Jose se une cada año para organizar la marcha y manifestación anual del primero de mayo, el uno de mayo, que es una afirmación de los derechos internacionales de los trabajadores, pero también una declaración sobre cuestiones que nosotros como coalición apoyamos o defenderemos y contra las que lucharemos.
Trump is going after federal workers, organized labor, social services, trans people, reproductive rights, education, science, health, the poor and marginally housed, and the list goes on. We continue to stand up and fight against this and appreciate the county's efforts.
Trump está persiguiendo a los trabajadores federales, los sindicatos, los servicios sociales, las personas trans, los derechos reproductivos, la educación, la ciencia, la salud, los pobres, y los marginados y inmigrantes, y la lista continua.
Trump's aggression extends globally, as he bombs Yemen, greenlights the ethnic cleansing of Gaza, lays claim to Greenland and the Panama Canal, and war mongers against Iran and China. We continue to stand up and fight against this. We also continue to demand the board bring forth a resolution on a Gaza ceasefire. We have waited far too long.
La agresión de Trump se extiende a nivel mundial mientras bombardea Yemen da luz verde a la limpieza étnica de Gaza, reclama verbalmente este Gran Landia y el Canal del Panamá, y belice a Iran y China.
Trump's attacks on immigrants have hit close to home. Ulysses Peña-López, an immigrant father, was in his vehicle when ICE illegally broke his windows, dragged him out, causing injury. Ulysses remains in ICE custody. We continue to stand up and fight against this and all illegal ICE raids, and appreciate the county's efforts.
Seguimos levantándonos y luchando contra todo esto. También seguimos exigiendo a la junta que presentó una resolución sobre un alto fuego en Gaza hemos esperado demasiado. Los ataques de Trump a los inmigrantes han llegado muy cerca de casa. Ulysses Peña-López, un padre inmigrante, estaba en su vehículo cuando ICE rompió ilegalmente sus ventanas, lo arrestó afuera y le causó lesiones. Ulysses permanece bajo custodia de ICE. Seguimos levantándonos y luchando contra este, esta, y todas las redadas ilegales de ICE, y apreciamos los esfuerzos del condado.
As of April 24, over 280 colleges and universities reported 1,800 students and recent graduates who have had their legal statuses changed. Locally, there were nine at Deans and 13 at San Jose State. While the Trump administration has since restored their status, we will continue to stand in support of international students.
Hasta el 24 de abril, más de 280 colegios y universidades informaron que 1,800 estudiantes y recién graduados habían cambiado su estatus legal. A nivel local, hubo nueve en Deans y trece en la Universidad de Estado de San José. Si bien la administración Trump ha restablecido su estatus desde entonces, seguiremos apoyando a los estudiantes internacionales.
San Jose may soon weaponize SJP, this jail, unhoused people for simply being underserved and unhoused, and weaponizing other departments to sweep away unhoused people. We will stand up and fight against this weaponization.
San Jose pronto podría utilizar el departamento de policía como arma para encarcelar a las personas sin vivienda simplemente por estar desatendidos y sin vivienda, y utilizar como arma otros departamentos para barrer a las personas sin vivienda. Nos levantamos y luchamos contra esta militarización.
In 2015, Michael Tyree was murdered in county jail. Despite some changes, the deaths of disproportionately black and brown men continue. The jail monitor program through the Office of Women's Policy still hasn't been reactivated. We continue to stand up and fight against these failings.
En 2015, Michael Tyree fue asesinado en la cárcel del Condado. A pesar de algunos cambios, las muertes desproporcionalmente de hombres negros y morenos continúan. El programa de vigilancia penintenciada a través de la oficina de políticas de la mujer aún no se ha reactivado. Nos levantaremos y lucharemos contra estos fracasos.
From the local grassroots campaign to defend and free Ulysses, to draconian budget cuts against the poor and unhoused, to the Supreme Court hearing to defend birthright citizenship, we are fighting back at all levels, and we will continue to do so as long as Trump remains in office.
Desde la campaña popular local para defender y liberar a Ulysses Peña-López, hasta los recortes presupuestarios draconianos contra los pobres y los que no tienen vivienda, hasta la audencia en la Corte Suprema para defender la ciudadana por derecho de nacimiento, estamos contratando en todos los niveles. Y continuaremos haciéndolo mientras Trump permanezca en cargo. Juntos, sí se puede, sí se puede, sí se puede. Gracias.
Thank you. And with Santa Clara County's rich history of resistance and movement making, thank you for joining me in proclaiming May Day. I'd like to invite my colleagues from the board and our administration from the day to join us.
Next up, we have a posthumous commendation for Henry Dominguez for his remarkable contributions to the Chicano Movement, indigenous spiritual leadership, and empowerment of... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So we moved that one to the next one, sorry. It's to commendation for Kathy Sutherland, occasion of retirement, for unwavering commitment of time and expertise to the community, and proud service. Supervisor Young.
Yeah, let's talk about retirement. I hope to get there someday. Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite Kathy to join me and also her family, her family. Come on up. I'm gonna ask the family to come up because it was a whole family affair to share Kathy with us. We are presenting a commendation today to Kathy Sutherland as she retires from the county of Santa Clara after serving as a board aide for the Office of Supervisor Cindy Chavez, and then my office. Kathy is here today with her husband Craig, her daughters Rachel and Lauren, and most important of all, her grandchildren Vivian, Charlotte, Sawyer, and Benny. For more than 20 years, Kathy has played a critical role in local government at both the city and county levels. First, she served as the chief of staff to the late Nancy Pyle during her time on the San Jose City Council. Then, here at the county of Santa Clara, she served as a scheduler and executive assistant, first for Supervisor Cindy Chavez and then for me. All of us up here on the day, yes, know exactly how crazy and how hard it is for a supervisor to manage their schedule. So being a good scheduler requires that rare combination of firmness, tact, and the ability to work under pressure. Kathy was the best. But more... But more than just being a trusted advisor and staff member, Kathy has been an outstanding public citizen of both San Jose and Santa Clara County throughout her life. From her engagement on neighborhood and downtown San Jose issues stretching back decades to her newest role as a member of the Santa Clara County Open Space Authority, Kathy is a model for what an engaged and informed citizen should be. Thank you, Kathy, for supporting strong women leaders in our community throughout your career and for being one yourself. Now, before I turn the mic over to Kathy, Kathy specifically, very clearly, in no uncertain terms, told me, "Do not do this." Do not give me a commendation. Do not bring me up to the dais. Do not do this. But Kathy, you also told me the night after I won my election that I'm the supervisor now and I get to do what I want to do. That's right. So thank you for your good advice and I turn to you, Kathy, to say a few words.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Young, Betty, you and your colleagues, my family, my D2 family. I can't thank you enough for this amazing recognition. It has been an honor, a privilege, and a joy to be entrusted to serve with all of you. Thank you very much and thank you.
I'd like to invite my colleagues and our administration to join us for a family photo.
Next up, we have a commendation for Dominic Dela Bueno for his outstanding customer service, creativity, and dedication to operational excellence, presented by Supervisor Abicoga.
Thank you, President Lee, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm Margaret Abicoga, supervisor for District 5, which covers nine cities, starting from the North County through the West Valley Cities into half of Almadén. And I also serve as chair of the Housing, Land Use, Environment, and Transportation, better known as HULIT Committee. And I have the privilege today of presenting a commendation to one of the members of the county's Consumer and Environmental Protection Department's Weights and Measures Division, which falls under the HULIT Committee. And this commendation is for Dominic Dela Bueno. And he is a senior office specialist in the Weights and Measures Division. As we all know, we all play a part in helping the county run. And it takes individual employees in all departments to provide the services that benefit and protect our residents. What's less talked about is the role of employees in keeping the county healthy so that it can continue to provide those services. I wanted to recognize this particular employee who has gone above and beyond to fully realize his role and see opportunities for creative solutions to complex problems. Dominic has been with the county's Weights and Measures Division for a little over a year now and in his time with us has already made an indelible impact through his work. Within a year of working for the county, Dominic and the rest of the Weights and Measures team successfully recouped $580,000 in back payments from old unimpaid invoices going back 16 years. I heard that number in our committee meeting and I was stunned. Gaining over a half a million dollars at any given time is impactful, but given the great uncertainty hanging over us as we go into the budget season this year, it is even more consequential. This is no small feat for the county and a truly inspirational achievement by Dominic. Your actions represent the very idea of going above and beyond and then seeing opportunities where others may see problems. And so I wanted to take this moment to publicly recognize Dominic's perseverance and creativity and commend him for his dedication to operational excellence within Santa Clara County. So thank you for your service to our county and to our residents, Dominic. And if my colleagues would... Actually, I wanted to invite you to say a few words first, if you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you to those assembled here today, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for inviting me over here and of course to my associates in the audience. I'd like to thank my incredible team at SEPA, the Consumer and Environmental Protection Agency. We have an extremely talented team and the work we do, I feel very grateful to be involved in. And I'd like to particularly thank my team members, Joanna, Maribel, and Brenda, whose subject matter expertise, support, and endless encouragement made this project possible. Thank you for having me here today.
If my colleagues wouldn't mind.
All right, next proclamation, we're declaring the week of May 5th to 9th as a Public Service Recognition Week in Santa Clara County. Please, James Williams.
So it's my privilege to honor and recognize, I'm half the Board of Supervisors, a proclamation recognizing Public Service Recognition Week. Public Service Recognition Week is celebrated the first week of May to honor those who serve their communities as public servants. And in a time, at the federal level especially, when civil service is under such attack, we are so fortunate here in Santa Clara County to have over 23,000 dedicated employees who are committed to improving Santa Clara County and to serving our residents right here. They tackle every day some of the toughest problems, deliver incredible safety net services, provide solutions-oriented policies, deliver efficient and exceptional service to this community. As public servants, our county employees approach their work with empathy, compassion, integrity, and responsibility, adaptability, and resilience. Our county public servants deliver meals to seniors, process benefit applications, provide programming to justice-involved youth and adults, maintain the safety of county roads and expressways, proudly serve our veterans, and of course, our most vulnerable residents. So this week is an opportunity for all of us collectively across the community to recognize the work day in and day out that our public servants at all levels of government provide that we otherwise sometimes take for granted. We have, in our county alone, over 300 employees who have dedicated over 30 years of service to this organization, which I think is truly extraordinary. So we're grateful and express tremendous gratitude to our county employees, but also to those who've chosen a career in public service at all levels of government, federal, state, and local, who serve those residents here and across our country with such distinction. In honor of our Public Service Awareness Week, we are going to be ensuring that the proclamation on behalf of our entire Board of Supervisors is shared with our county staff at the upcoming meeting at the bridge and in other occasions. And we're just so grateful for the service that our employees provide every day. Thank you. And I think right on point with that, that takes us to that time of each month where we get to recognize a few specific public employees who have been chosen to receive our Employee Excellence Awards. And so if you're an award recipient, if you could please come up and join me on my right and left in the chairs. Today, we're going to hear and recognize some of our outstanding public servants in the Employee Services Agency, Public Defender's Office, Sheriff's Office, Registrar of Voters, Social Services Agency, Department of Child Support Services, Santa Clara Valley Healthcare, Behavioral Health Services Department, and our Santa Clara County Fire Department. And the way this works is I'll call you up one at a time. I'll read something nice about you from your departments. Then you're going to take a step back and President Lee will hand you your certificate. You'll take a photo and then at the end we'll do a group photo all together with the board. So our first award recipient is Jay Nakagami. With more than 22 years of dedicated service to the county, Jay Nakagami brings a strong work ethic and passion to his work. Jay began his career with the county in 2003 as an extra help warehouse materials handler. Since then, he advanced to Senior Human Resources Analyst, demonstrating his remarkable growth and expertise in his field. During the acquisition of St. Louis and O'Connor Hospitals, Jay played a major role in mapping out the onboarding process. He worked long hours to ensure the experience for new staff was positive. Jay ensures his team has access to the right training and resources for their tasks while encouraging the development of open and positive collaborations with other departments. By focusing on customer service and the recruitment experience, Jay helps and motivates support staff to evolve in their careers, often referencing his own career progression. Jay's passion for his team, the agency, and the county distinguishes him as a true leader and inspires those around him to pursue excellence. Congratulations. Bina Pope. Bina Pope has proudly served as a paralegal with the Public Defender's Office since 2015. Currently, she's dedicated to CalWorks Expungement Program, which helps people remove criminal convictions from their record where appropriate. Reaching as many CalWorks recipients as possible is challenging. Bina's commitment to outreach and coordination with Social Services Agency staff is extraordinary. Bina works with SSA employment counselors to reach as many CalWorks clients as possible. Recognizing the importance of informing CalWorks clients about the Expungement Program from the moment they walk through the doors, Bina was instrumental in the Public Defender Office's involvement in SSA's orientation video for clients. Acting Public Defender Damon Silver said it best, quote, "Bina is dedicated to the core service but consistently takes the initiative to consider strategies to improve the program. She always has an eye toward improving the service to clients while not missing the human connection and compassion in how she approaches her work." Congratulations. Christina Bukovic. Deputy Christina Bukovic has demonstrated unwavering commitment to public service and community engagement throughout her 12 years with the Sheriff's Office. Deputy Bukovic has excelled in various critical roles, including patrol, court security, and responsibilities as a field training officer and court training officer. She's currently assigned as a recruit training officer at the Justice Training Center in Morgan Hill. Deputy Bukovic has played an instrumental role in shaping the future of law enforcement, not only within the Sheriff's Office, but also within 14 law enforcement agencies throughout the Bay Area. She's helped train more than 200 deputies and officers, equipping them with the skills, compassion, and dedication to thrive in the law enforcement community. Beyond her exceptional training contributions, Deputy Bukovic has been a dedicated member of the peer support team. She helped form the team and develop its policies, ensuring that it supports colleagues through challenging moments in their careers. Her ability to provide emotional and professional support highlights her deep commitment to the well-being of those she works with. Thank you for your service. Julia Sanz. Julia Sanz began her journey with the county in 2005 as extra help at the Registrar of Voters and later at the Social Services Agency. Since 2014, Julia has worked as an elections official at the ROV, rising through the ranks to become an election division coordinator. During her years at the ROV, Julia has had diverse responsibilities from recruiting election officers and staffing polling places in the precinct operations division to providing public services to prospective candidates in the candidate services division. In each role, Julia has dedicated herself to ensuring smooth election operations while meeting legal mandates. She's committed to consistently delivering efficient, effective, and high-quality services, taking the initiative to evaluate, enhance, and develop the ROV's processes, procedures, and public information. Julia has always gone the extra mile to serve our community. She leads with integrity and always treats others with respect. Her deep knowledge of election processes, bilingual skills, and compassion for underserved residents have made her a trusted leader in the field. Congratulations. I see we have Shannon here on end. Elena Tindall. Elena Tindall is a Program Manager III in the Social Services Agency. In her role, she serves as the Continuous Quality and Improvement Manager. Besides having all the technical skills and certifications needed to do the job effectively, she demonstrates humility, good humor, and kindness in her work. Elena is usually called in when there's a process issue or a problem to be fixed. And she arrives with a no-blame attitude and a "together, we get better" approach that creates psychological safety and convinces stakeholders to buy into the process. Elena's approach to leadership is driven by her values, respect for all contributors. Her staff say she's a great coach, supporter, delegator, and manager. Her clients say that she takes the time to listen thoughtfully to everyone's ideas and concerns, making sure everyone feels heard. Elena has shown tremendous leadership in building a multi-agency stakeholder coalition for SSA's data governance process. She has brought energy and a level of participation to the topic, making the collaboration informative and effective for all. making the collaboration informative and effective for all who participate. Elena has been an invaluable resource for her team and the Social Services Agency. Thank you. Roberto Tercero. As the IT Manager for the Department of Child Support Services, Roberto Tercero oversees all information technology functions for the department including hardware, software, business systems, networks, and servers. Roberto is the department's primary liaison with the California Department of Child Support Services Technology Team. He's always searching for new and improved solutions to help staff perform their jobs more effectively. He approaches projects with a "yes" attitude and has played a vital role in helping the county implement technologies that advance the California Child Support Program. Roberto is recognized as an IT expert in child support programs across California. He is committed to the mission of the department and always goes the extra mile to help the management team achieve its goals. He's often called upon to develop customized technological solutions to fit DCSS's specific needs and always rises to the occasion. Roberto plays a crucial role on DCSS's leadership team, helping the department achieve success in fulfilling customers' needs and expectations. Congratulations. Aaron Salazar. Aaron Salazar is a Program Manager for Santa Clara Valley Healthcare focusing on environmental health and safety. He has an unwavering commitment to the patients and staff at O'Connor Hospital and is a leader with genuine concern for the well-being of the community and is driven to create a safe environment for all. His passion is evident in the robust Environment of Care Committee that Aaron leads as well as his work to rally multiple departments around the cause of workplace safety. He's an effective collaborator reaching across all disciplines to ensure team members are trained and engaged. Aaron is always looking for ways to participate. He's been instrumental in efforts to improve parking availability for patients and visitors and providing training for disaster response. Aaron is tireless and his efforts have led to significant improvements in safety practices. He's trained numerous staff members in safety initiatives and received kudos from leaders for his outstanding support in these initiatives. His proactive measures and constant vigilance have minimized safety incidents and improved the overall workplace safety culture for employees and clients alike. Thank you, Aaron. Socio Manriquez. Socio is a psychiatric social worker with the Baver Health Services Department who is dedicated to her clients and to high-quality care. She has the knowledge and skills to engage clients with treatment offering culturally responsive services while supporting family members. Socio is respected by her peers and serves as a consultant for other staff members when needed. She's highly valued by the South County community where she works to connect clients with resources like employment assistance. But what makes her really stand out is her excellent leadership skills. Whenever there's a change in a process or something that needs troubleshooting, she jumps in to assist without hesitation, showing drive and a positive attitude. She treats clients with empathy and compassion and high-quality service delivery inspiring her team to match her high level of service. She's innovative, inspiring, and an excellent clinician radiating integrity, kindness, and passion in her work. Thank you. Brooke Hardy. Captain Brooke Hardy's leadership at County Fire embodies the department's motto of courtesy and service in every aspect of his work. He demonstrates the highest levels of professionalism, resourcefulness, and compassion, particularly in the demanding terrain of the Highway 17 corridor. Whether responding to complex emergencies like vehicle rollovers or wildland fires or leading technical rescues in rugged areas, Captain Hardy remains calm, effective, and deeply committed to operational excellence. What sets Brooke apart is his unwavering mentorship and commitment to continuous improvement. Colleagues turn to Captain Hardy for guidance knowing they will receive thoughtful instruction and encouragement. He creates meaningful hands-on trainings to elevate team readiness. His leadership style is a blend of warmth, accountability, and clarity, nurturing his crew's professional skills and personal well-being. Captain Hardy's integrity and pride in his work resonate throughout the department and the community. He's a trusted role model who brings out the best in others, leading with both heart and expertise. His commitment to excellence makes him an outstanding fire captain and an inspirational figure for all to emulate. Thank you for your service. Well, let's give a huge round of applause to all of our award recipients. The Board will come join, we're going to take a group photo.
Congratulations everybody and we will go ahead and adjourn to the Board of Supervisors meetings tomorrow morning, May 6th at 9:30 right here. Thank you.